Okay, good evening. Call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for August 11th, 2020 to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, all of the selectmen are present, as is Town Administrator Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Bowen will not be with us this evening.
Yep. Pledge of Allegiance. Don.
The pledge of allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the people of the public. The way we stand, one nation, equal citizens, of the very essence of our world.
Thank you. Okay, announcements. Alan.
Well, basically, all events everywhere are constantly being canceled. The South Coast Bike Path Alliance on September 13th is planning a ride from the YMC in Dockmouth to gain support for the South Coast Bike Way Project, and that's all I have for that.
Thank you. Patrick.
No, I'm good. I'll do it under comments.
Tim.
Um, by me?
Hmm?
Announcements of like things would be coming up?
Theoretically.
Yeah, nothing.
Nothing? Okay, Judy.
I have a couple, thank you. I'd like to let everyone know who has been searching online for Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, that I'm working with the office to get them up to date. For the year 2020, there are only five sets of minutes online that I can find, and those are for the month of February. I'm going to be working with the office again tomorrow. I was working with them this morning and this afternoon, and the 2019 minutes will also be brought up to date. The agendas are there, but the minutes are not. Out of curiosity, I checked 2019 just to make sure that I wasn't missing something, and there are over 25 sets of minutes missing from 2019. Finally, I will make sure that every time we have boardmen minutes accepted, that they will be posted in a timely fashion. One of the things that our community suffers from, from time to time, is food insecurity. Just want to remind people that Damian's pantry is open from 9:30 to 11:30 on Thursdays and Saturdays. St. Patrick's has a food pantry Wednesdays, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Church of the Good Shepherd has a food pantry the first Tuesday of the month, from 3:00 to 5:00, and they also have a meal every Thursday from 4:00 to 5:00. It's a bagged meal. And then, this is really not an announcement, I guess I could make it in comments, but I'll make it here. Last weekend was the graduation for the class of 2020, which has probably had the most unusual last four months of school of any of us. The valedictorian, Grace Serrato, made a really nice speech, and I'd like to read part of it to you. She said, "Every single one of us has had the honor of experiencing the sense of community at Wareham High firsthand, and we've all played an active role in the forwarding of those values. So when people ask us where we grew up, or where we came from, we should be proud to say, 'A community where everyone is treated equally.' We should be proud to say, 'A town where we support one another, no matter what.' We should be proud to say, 'A school where no one is judged by where they came from, how much money they have, or the color of their skin.' We should be proud to say, 'Wareham,' because while it may be our circumstances that made us a community, it was our attitudes that made us a family." I think coming from a high school senior, that's pretty strong stuff. And the graduating seniors were given a substantial number of scholarships, and Superintendent Shaverhood spoke about the kindness and the generosity of the community. Thank you.
I do have that.
Okay, Jim.
Yep.
And I'm glad I had a second to think about it. Okay, on August 22nd, Hazardous Waste Day, Municipal Maintenance Department in Wareham and Benson Brook Road Marion, this might be the only one we're going to have this year. So, you know, if you have stuff to go, pack it up and bring it down, and it should be a relatively, it might be, you know, it's going to be busy, but we've taken, they've made plans and made arrangements to make it much more smooth. We'll just have to see how it works out. The brush pile, which is normally open on that day, on the second weekend, will not be open, so don't go to the brush pile that day, because you won't be able to get in. Everybody should have gotten a flyer. If not, you can look online for what's accepted and not accepted. They came in the mail, and even people in P.O. boxes are supposedly supposed to get them. Thank you.
Yep, yeah, thank you for that. I have an announcement from the town moderator in her capacity as the chairman of the appointing authority for the planning board. There is a full-time vacancy on the planning board. It's going to be published, it's going to be put up on the town website and on the town bulletin board, but she also requested that I announce it at this meeting tonight, just to initially get the word out there. So, planning boards, fairly technical board, helpful to have some knowledge about land use issues, so on and so forth, and if you do, please submit your application, because they're in need of somebody.
And can I add to that?
Yeah.
There's a full-time position that's opened up.
That's correct.
There may be, there may be an associate position that opens up.
Yes.
And we can do both at the same time, so that we can capture the...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, trying to track that right now to determine exactly, you know, what is there, but we are certain that there is a full-time position. The chairman of the planning board did alert...
Correct.
...the moderator to that fact.
You can post both potential and open slots.
Yep.
So if you don't want to do it twice.
Yep, save the money. We don't want to make the papers too rich.
The application form is online.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's another thing, too. And actually, there are a bunch of committee openings, and I would encourage anybody to go online, take a look. If there's something you're interested in, or even if there's something you're not sure if you're interested in, and you want to know more about it, either file an application or reach out to our office to get the information. Okay, citizens' comments. Is there anybody here to speak to the board tonight? Good evening.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Yeah, Don Jepson. Is it all right to take this down to speak, or...
Yeah.
No.
Get the microphone.
I'm...
But Al would prefer you didn't.
Don, why don't you move over there?
The state rules if people don't have a mask, it's 14 feet.
Which one?
If not, it's six. Thank you.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, Don Jepson, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I just wanted to speak to what's going on at this time with COVID-19, and there's a lot of stress on people, and I just wanted to speak to the fact that there's importance of courtesy, professionalism, communication, and sharing. And I have a couple of examples. I said if someone communicated to you in writing their congratulations on winning an election, and that person told you they voted for you, would you consider that courteous and professional not to reply to that person? Okay. Likewise, if a person took action to try to get something accomplished that would benefit the town, would you consider that courteous and professional to encourage that person's effort by communicating with them and sharing information? I have a couple of handouts, if I could pass those out?
Yeah, you give them to the...
Yeah.
Give them to the clerk, and she'll keep one for the record and...
Yeah.
Distribute the rest.
Thank you. And, okay, we'll kind of follow two of the comments that I have, and one of them that I referred to, I talked about sharing. I said, "I made an inquiry back at the 13th of July to find out what was going on with a subject which I think you're all familiar with, which is the efforts to try to get the Wareham River and Harbor dredged." And one of the things that came up is that the town has a, an application into the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to dredge the channel, and one of the other towns, Wellfleet, took action to work with a dredging consultant, and then they were able to piggyback on the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers program in their dredging. So I said I wanted to share with you, I said I did not hear back after 20 days from my inquiry, and so I thought I could at least find out one part, because I know it's vacation time, and it's busy season for Gary and everything, but so I contacted the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So what I wanted to share with you is the email that came back to me, which is on page one of that handout, the one that's stapled, and it's a very nice response from Coral Siligato with the Army Corps of Engineers. She's the project manager on this, and she said she hadn't heard from me since 2018, and hoped that the email found me well, which I did. And what she reported was, "The evaluation of the bulk chemistry data from the Wareham River determined that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer needs to conduct water column and limited biological testing in order to complete a suitability determination for placement at the Cape Cod disposal site. This work is currently ongoing. Elevated numbers in one of the samples triggered a need to do additional testing. I just sent an email to the folks conducting the work and evaluating the data to find out their schedule," which I will share with you once I hear that back. She said, "In the meantime, please fill out the harbor information form." And she says, "We could schedule a meeting once we have the harbor information form and the test results back, unless you have any questions and you want to talk sooner." So she's anxious to get this project going. And she also adds, she says, "I received an email inquiry from Gary Buckminster a few weeks ago." Well, her email is August 3rd, and I had given to Gary's office on the 13th that, so I presume, if it was two weeks and I back up the dates, it looks like Gary went in and took a look at it. Subsequent to that, I got an email from Coral, and she also wanted to know who were, she said, "I received an email from Gary Buckminster a few weeks ago. Would you two be the best points of contact going forward?" Well, I emailed back to her and said that Gary is the person who is the point person on that, and so when he gets the harbor information form in, then they can continue to work on this. So, but I haven't heard from Gary, so I don't know if he's done that or not. With regard to the fall town meeting, which was one in which there was Article 6, which came from the Harbor Masters Office, the DNR, and then there was an Article 19, which I went forward with. If you, if you recall, I believe you called it the Jepson Bill, right?
Yes.
And when that came to a vote here, I was told that what was in Article 6, that what I proposed in Article 19, which was the hiring of a dredging consultant, like what they did in Wellfleet, okay, which they were successful at, and I was told that that was in Article 6. Well, at the time, I didn't realize, and that's my learning curve, I did not realize that what was published is an abbreviated form. It doesn't show all of Article 6, and I couldn't seem to get my hands on it for some reason, but I asked for it, but it never happened. But I did go to the selectmen's office, and on September 4th, Article 6, even though it doesn't say number 6, that's page 3 in this handout, that is the Article 6 detail. And Mr. Bowen isn't here, but if he was, you could ask him to look at it, because I don't see any reference in there to the hiring of a dredging consultant, okay? And when that went to a vote, and our selectmen titleman moved not to recommend the securing services of a dredging consultant, okay? Present before the board, I was here, and the petition for the article, Mr. Jepson went over his article that he submitted, the same article as within the director of the natural, Director of Natural Resources article for dredging. Well, I would like to have somebody point out to me where it is, and so, anyway, I don't have any answers on that, but I did hand-carry to Derek. It's been 31 days, I haven't heard anything. I think that I should be extended the courtesy of a response. Did anybody hire a dredging consultant? Derek?
This is not the place.
First off...
Yes.
Derek shouldn't be answering that, and secondly, he's got to really get on the agenda if he wants to talk about this.
Right, because now we're getting into...
I'll tell you what, just keep the handout.
Yeah, we'll follow up on...
Whenever you find out what went on, please let me know.
Happy to let you know. Yeah, we'll let you know if the funds were properly allocated, if something happened, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, when you find out what's going on...
Yep.
Okay, let me know, because I left people alone for a year and a half. I spent money of my own on Article 19 to convince people that at the town meeting, and it was handed out there. At that time, Derek came up to me, I don't know whether that prompted him to do that, but I basically said there was a difference, and he said there was a compromise where it would be rolled into there. If you look through what I have here, it pretty much tells you that that wasn't adhered to, and I found out from somebody else that unless it was specifically put up on the board and the people did it, so I got snookered, because I went with a compromise.
No, 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 thank you. Did you see the motion? The motion that was voted on? No, thank you, Mr. Jepson. That's unacceptable.
What's unacceptable?
Excuse me, everyone. This is outside limits of what we do.
All right, I'm calling a halt to this. Don, I will, I will look into this, we will get the answers to you, but we're not going to sit here and have a shouting match.
Okay, thank you very much.
So...
All right.
We will look into this professionally and respond professionally.
Thank you.
Okay, then, any other citizens with comments?
Sandy's home, we're all safe.
Oh.
We're safe.
All right, then, board comments. Alan.
I'm going to take a couple of minutes. Selectmen Tropiano sent me a note last week about Route 6 and 28 projects. I want to go over everything with everybody, so everybody understands what's happening now and what happened originally. When this project first came up, Selectmen Titlebaum and I were involved way back, probably five years ago. The state wanted us to take over the road after the project was done. They were going to give us a couple trucks to help plowing, but no labor, no anything else. We basically, and I did, and Peter did for a while, I fought with the state constantly, saying, "There's no way we're going to do this." I didn't want to lose the road project, but at the same time, I wasn't going to put the town of Wareham into a financial hole permanently.
Yep.
So finally it was accepted, and that's how the project went forward. Discussions came up about a year and a half ago, as they were signing the contract, everything out, that the project was going to take four seasons, which means four years. We went back to them, because we asked them not to do anything in July and August, we went back to them and said, "There's no way our businesses can survive four years of road construction there." So they said, "Okay, we'll cut it back to two, but we're going to have to do some work, obviously, as we go along." They asked, originally, they were going to do the utility stuff, which is what they did. I found out basically that they're required, or it's a standard procedure, that when they're doing a road project like that, they have to notify all utilities that they're going to be doing this, because there'll be no construction of any kind on the road for five years after they finish. Can't dig up the road, et cetera. Unbeknownst to the selectmen, I don't know about anybody else, but we never got notified that the Onset Fire and Water District stepped up and contracted with the state, because the state was involved directly, and with Landers, who is a contractor, to go ahead and do water lines on the road, and there was no restriction about what timeframe, because Landers has a contract with the state that they have to finish their project in a certain amount of time, and Landers also can start and stop wherever they want. The state cannot get involved with that. So when I found out that's what was happening, we were getting complaints about the road, I found out also that Onset actually changed the orders, and actually, one of their main water lines dug up as well and replaced. Those are the ones running down the middle, which is the mess you have right now.
Yep.
So as far as the town of Wareham goes, we did what we said we were going to do, we worked in this best we could. The patchwork is extremely temporary patchwork until they get it all completed, then they'll go over, and they will redo the road, but not to a final finish, because they still have the overall project to go, but they will clean it up. I have the name of the engineer who oversees the project. I reached out to Mass DOT after Patrick called me, and we talked about it, and the gentleman called me back a day later, which is very unusual for Mass DOT, and he said, "Alan, here's what we got. We'll work Monday through Thursday. If we have to do some work on Friday, it'll be early in the morning, at least through the summer, and we'll cut back, so at least for the weekends, on Friday in particular, you won't have the mess you have. We apologize, but there's nothing we can do, because, if you remember, you did ask us to cut it back to two years." So that's the situation. I apologize to the residents, but we had no idea that they were going to add an extra project, which is the water lines, which is really what caused this problem. Again, it's, you know, the utilities have the right to do it, because once it starts, the real road project, you're done for five years. Thank you.
Yeah, and I remember all that, and you're entirely correct about, you know, the original attempt by the state to fork the road over to us, and we did resist that. I drove down there, I want to say a week ago, and, you know, I've got a low-slung car, and I was, I came close to catching air a couple of times, and it's not like I was doing 80. I repatched it since then. I went down as far as stop and shop today, and it was a little bit better, I thought. Actually, I got a pizza last night down at Charlie's, and coming back, which before had been terrible, it looks like they, you know, they keep digging it up, patching it, digging it up, patching it, that's just how it goes when you're laying pipe and stuff like that, and it seemed a bit better, but, you know, if there was ever an incentive to go the speed limit on that road, you know, your undercarriage, your transmission, and your springs will thank you for going the speed limit, because if you go bebopping over that stuff at 52 miles an hour, like you normally drive down there, you got a good shot at doing some damage to your car. Patrick?
Okay, so today, I spent some time out there, because I got a lot of complaints from some of the businesses, and they were working the water line on the side of the road from roughly Dunkin' Donuts, just a little past, I guess it was probably, what's her name's place there, Bailey's, coming down, and then the other way, they came the other way at the same time, and they were going by the trailer park. But they went all the way down, and they went past the cart land and all that stuff. The unfortunate thing was, is they didn't tell anybody they were going to do it, and they basically locked everybody out of their businesses, so that no one could basically get into the businesses. So for the day, the businesses didn't do anything, because there was no way for anybody to get into that.
To get across, right.
Okay? And even when they filled it in, it was just a hole, so nobody was going to drive across it and go in, so basically, nobody got to do any business today. The other issues that have been going on, and these are the things that are absurd, besides not notifying people, "Hey, we're going to be digging there, we're going to have you, you're not going to be able to probably get in and out for a while, whatever," and at least let these people know would be a nice thing, but they don't. They just did it. The other thing that's happened is they've hit the gas lane, main, and they shut businesses off for an entire day with no gas. So restaurants don't cook without gas. They then turned around, and they hit the water main, and they poured the water main, and they flooded people's driveways and shut their water off, so now they couldn't function again. And this is, this is the ongoing problem with each of these businesses are getting hurt big time for this kind of treatment. And frankly, I'd say the contractor isn't doing a very good job, okay? Because I know, I've done a lot of utility work, I've been in this business a long time, I know what it's like, and be honest with you, they're just, they're not handling it very well. They've hit, what, the water main three times now? Okay? And flooded stuff and everything, everything else.
Just to clarify, Patrick?
Remember who the contractor is, Patrick?
Yeah, well, and that's the problem, and also...
But is this the water district contractor that's doing this?
It's the same contractor.
Same contractor, Peter.
Okay.
They got, they got the contract for the same thing.
Same big, big contractor.
And they, and they're patching by using a grade-all, and unfortunately, when you use a grade-all and you just kind of, because I watched them do it today, and you just kind of skim across it and then run over it, you're going to end up with depressions...
Right, divots.
Uneven, not, no, there was no, there's been no compaction or anything underneath it, so it's going to settle, it's going to be issues, and it's going to make a mess out of that road, and people's cars are going to get damaged. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is out there right now. These guys are doing a terrible, terrible job and a terrible disservice to this town right now, what they're doing out there, and what they're doing to these businesses, and I'm not very happy about it. I don't know how we approach it, or how we get them to step up to the plate and start acting like reputable contractors, but they're not doing it right now. And I spent the whole day out there today paying attention to this stuff, watching what they were doing, seeing what was going on, and it's not a very good thing at all. Those, and the humps in the middle, they didn't get any better, they just settled a little bit. That's the only reason why, but they're, they're like this, it's like going down the road, it's worse than a roller coaster. And unfortunately now, I, some seniors say to me, "Well, how come you, they don't want to go out to the strip? That's going to hurt the businesses."
Yep.
You know what I mean? They don't want to go out there, they go around, they don't want to go anywhere near the road. These are problems. This is a problem for our businesses out there that are stuck with COVID-19, and at the same time now, they got hit with this on top of it.
Double whammy for them.
A double whammy.
Alan, you have the contacts.
And I know, Alan, I know there's probably not much you can do, but...
It's really simple. Number one, it's not the town's project.
It is not.
Number one.
Yeah.
No, it's not ours. Number two, if we have an issue with the contractors that we think this board needs to vote, you know, basically, it will give me the authority to call Mass DOT, it's the engineer who's in charge, to lodge a complaint about what's happening. We have no control over the contractor, the way these state contracts...
You know what, I'll accept the motion under 48-hour business for that.
Just made it.
Okay, I mean, that's all we can do.
So moved.
I, second.
Oh, okay, second.
Okay, motion...
Vice versa, whatever.
Motion for an emergency letter by Selectman Slavin to Mass DOT, by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
We also need to reach out to the Onset Fire and Water District, contact them, let them know that we're unhappy, and they need to step up, because it is their project.
I want to tell you another thing.
Make motion to authorize Mr. Slavin.
You know what, one second. You know, Patrick, Patrick, I think, has a good grasp on this from the business angle and the impacts, and Alan, you certainly have the state contacts and so on and so forth, as well as some good contacts in onset, so why don't the two of you work together to draft this letter? I think that would be good, because I think that way, the, you know, not only are we looking at it from, you know, as the executive authority of the town, but we're also getting the business perspective from Patrick and your contacts as well.
Okay.
So, just so you know, one of our businesses, the owner's car, was run into by one of the pipes that they let roll across the yard and into her car.
Somebody, somebody needs to get a grip.
Literally.
Literally and figuratively.
I mean, come on, man, you know, you're dealing with round pipe.
Yeah.
Right? It rolls. It's going to roll.
For the records, for our minutes, the head engineer who oversees the project is Michael McGrath.
Michael McGrath.
Yep.
M.C. M.C.
Awesome. Because, you know, I don't know that it'll do any good, but look, they need to hear it. They need to hear it from us.
Right.
They need to hear it. We need to help defend our businesses, and at least let our businesses know that we're sticking up for them, you know?
Yeah, I'd ask that we copy any correspondence to our elective representatives on Beacon Hill as well. I think that would be good to let them know, I mean...
It would also be good to get some of the businesses that are being impacted to write a letter that we can forward as well.
Yeah, that would be a great idea, Alan.
Because you just, you know, we sit here and complain, doesn't matter, when businesses complain, those are votes.
That's a great idea.
And we have bi-weekly meetings with them over at, over on the 28th site, so it's good to...
True.
Yeah, it's good for us to be notified about these things.
That's a great idea, to have letters from the businesses.
And I appreciate, I appreciate Selectmen... And I appreciate, I appreciate Selectman Slavin standing up and everything going on, but letting us know as well helps us because, you know, obviously gave...
Didn't realize you have a meeting tomorrow, so that's good.
Me neither. So...
May I just suggest that a copy of the letter that you sent to McGrath also, just a copy of that goes to the Onset Fire District?
Yeah, yeah.
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 Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because they're, because I mean, it's their project too at this point.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. Okay, great. That's, that's good. At least, at least I feel like we're doing something anyway.
Okay, thank you.
They're just, they jumped on the opportunity to have that installed by the contractor of the state because they needed to do some replacement.
Right.
So they, they basically just bought the material and the contractors doing the work.
Yeah, you know...
That was a very, very smooth move by them.
They made some, they saved some dough on that, I'll tell you that right now.
Yes, they did. So just so you know.
Huh? Materials and labor.
Yeah, but they saved some dough, trust me.
Yeah, they saved a lot of dough. You know, you know where they learned that trick from was when the sewer project that went down Oak Street and did Parkwood at the same time, remember the water district jumped in and said, oh, you're cracking the road open? And sure enough, they went in there and laid pipe. And then we fought for two years. How much money was it? It was like two hundred grand that we paid out. We had to get back from the water district or something?
When you bid, when you, when you bid that job, you know, no one's going to beat, bid, beat them in a bid. When you already got all your equipment and everything out there, sitting there.
Right.
Manpower and everything else. You're not going to beat those guys. They save some dough.
If you collect thirty percent more for cracking the same road open at the same time with the same equipment, it's all gravy.
Exactly.
It's a sweet deal for them.
That's a pretty good sweet deal for them.
And it's a good deal, it's a good deal for the contractor, it's a good deal for the water department. And unfortunately, it's turned out to be a crap deal for the businesses.
Yeah.
Yes?
Um, did we vote? Did, we made a motion in a second, but I don't, we never voted.
Okay, I'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
The last one we had was August fifth, so we're coming up on the new one pretty soon. But that's probably a week away or so.
Okay, good.
I've emailed the engineer already.
Expect to, let's expect... I'll, I'll contact a few of the businesses that I know of that have had issues and ask them to write letters. I'll ask them to write letters.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Alan?
As you can imagine, I currently...
That was a good one.
Had a lot to say today.
Always is.
Yep.
And you know who owns Cartland.
Patrick, what comments?
No, I'm good. That's what I was going to talk about tonight, so we're all good.
Okay. Uh, Jim?
Um, no, I'm good.
Judy?
I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, I, I just had sort of a general comment and it's applicable to nobody and everybody at the same time. You know, we've been dealing with this pandemic for roughly five months in terms of the actual impacts. You know, in terms of disruptions to school, to life, to work, all sorts of things. Travel, vacations, you name it, the virus has screwed it up. And, you know, first off, you know, we're at kind of a crossroads in this state. You know, the governor got us into phase three, we got ourselves into phase three. And now the governor is seeing some upticks here and there because people are getting complacent. People are getting involved in large gatherings and they're actually tracking what's going on out there to the point where they can say, you know, you two hundred people here caused those five hundred cases, you know, in that area. Because they're, they're getting sophisticated enough with the tracking and the so on and so forth to be able to make those determinations. So the virus is still out there. Just because we're all tired of it, we're sick of it, we want to go back to normal life, doesn't mean we get to just yet. Because every time we get close to sort of getting over the hump here, if we screw up, then we just roll back down the hill and we got to climb again. So think before you invite five families over for a barbecue in your backyard. Is that really the smart thing to do at this time? Think before, you know, somebody invites you to a large beach gathering and it's not just your immediate family that you've been with substantially for the past several months. The other thing is, of course, because we're all dealing with this, you know, tempers get short, people get frustrated. But, you know, let's not all turn into Karen and Kenzie are dropping a dime on our neighbors. You know, for petty offenses, silly little things. We're getting, you know, quite a few more complaints, you know, coming at the town hall. You know, this person's doing this and that person's doing that. You know, try to put on some, some blinders, if you will. Put on some, you know, some blinders, you know. Now is not the time, folks. You know, our people, especially in the Board of Health, are stretched to the gills just trying to comply with the state mandates. You know, we're not Boston. We don't have the Boston Licensing Board with dozens of employees and inspectors and all this stuff to send out to respond to things. We essentially have something like two and a half people in that office who actually do the enforcement. So, you know, don't add to their load by complaining that, you know, your neighbor did this or somebody did that, so on and so forth. Please. You know, if you're aggravated and you're frustrated, take a deep breath. You know, go walk around the yard. Remember to put your off on because the triple E's out there again. But nonetheless, you know, let's all try to take a step back and not sharpshoot each other. Thank you.
One quick thing, just can I piggyback one second? Okay, so the key to this whole thing is, if you're going to, the thing happens is they get together, they don't wear the damn masks. You know what I mean? Like, just wear the darn masks, man. You know what I mean? Put them on. Cover your face if you're next to somebody, you know? I mean, this is the key to the whole ballgame, you know? You feel like you can't do anything, but you can. Put the mask on. Cover your face, cover everybody else's face, unless you're in a position like, okay, we got two pieces of plastic here. I'm pretty sure I don't have to worry about giving it to her or him, which is awesome. So I got my mask down so I can talk. But if, if we, this wasn't here, I'd have this thing up for sure. Okay, it wouldn't leave my face.
Yep.
I'm at work all day with one of these on. All day. Doesn't come off.
Yeah. Yeah, and you're out there, you know, in the hot sun on a, on a piece of equipment or knowing you, you're probably in a hole with a shovel in your hand.
In this case, I happen to be working in a building right now and there's some people in there working as well. And I don't want to give it to them and I don't want to be given to me.
Right.
So I wear my mask.
Yeah, every single one of us still has seven billion enemies out there. That's the thing you've got to remember, is that every single person on this planet can potentially kill you. So, you know, just because you're tired of it, doesn't make that go away. So just let's, let's smarten up, people. You know, we did a great job in this state compared to a lot of the states in the country. Let's not backslide and blow it.
Well, I must admit, when I get out of the car sometimes, I have taken it off in the car because I'm all alone. And I'll forget and I'll get outside the door, I have to go back in and get it. But I always go back in and get it.
Yeah.
Always.
Like tonight, you know, I did my usual show up three minutes before the meeting and I took ten steps towards the door and I said, oh, I forgot the mask. Went right back and got it. Just wear the mask. What Patrick says, wear the mask.
Wear the mask, man, and you'll be good.
Okay, appointments, reappointments and interviews. I understand that our selectmen who are working on the constables aren't quite ready to go forward with these appointments. So we'll kick those off until next week?
That's correct. So the only one before us would be the Wareham Historic District Commission.
Okay. So let's go forward with that one then, please.
Okay. I make a motion that Carolyn McMorrow of Thirteen Great Neck Road, Wareham, Mass. O two five seven one, be appointed as a member of the Wareham Historic District Commission for a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda would be the secondhand dealer license for the BPOE Wareham New Bedford Lodge of Elks, number seventy-three. The paperwork is all in order. I move that the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen grant a secondhand dealer license from May first, twenty twenty, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, to the BPOE Wareham New Bedford Lodge of Elks, number seventy-three. This license is granted under the town's Bylaw Division Two, Article Two, Sections One through Three, and the applicable rules, regulations and fees promulgated relative to secondhand articles. The condition is that no articles are to be stored, displayed or offered outside the described licensed premises or on a sidewalk or public way unless the license expressly so provides.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
And seconded by?
Patrick.
Patrick? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I have to abstain, I'm a member of the...
I know. Okay, it's four zero one with Alan abstaining because he's a member. Uh, let's see. Town Business, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as you know, we've been doing fairly well. There's, there's a new document that came out today, which is highlighting some of the sections you should have received from the Commonwealth. I'll forward it to the, to the board as well. It starts highlighting basically average daily case rate per hundred thousand for COVID by the city or town over the last two weeks. And you get a highlight of which color you are. We are in the lowest section, white, which is fantastic for us. You know, we know we haven't had the, as much of an uptick. We have had some, but especially given our population, our transient population, I'm very happy about it. But again, it does not mean we are by any stretch, you know, we can relax. There's, you know, we've still got the, everybody really getting a little, little packed on the beaches. It's the, it's the, it's the busiest I've seen on weekdays when I'm down there. You know, obviously the weekends are, are full, but it's, it's going nonstop and the weather's driving a lot of folks down to our area.
Nothing else to do either.
Yep, not much else to do. We, our residents were lucky, if you will. Other communities don't have a residence-only beach like Little Harbor, like we do. And, you know, you saw some of them starting to go that path and, and limiting them to residence-only, so. Uh, but right now where we stand on the, the cases is we have two hundred and twelve confirmed cases. Somebody had asked me before, the state numbers and the town numbers are different, different. We do, the state sends us the numbers down. We do the contact tracing at our local level. And the Buzzards Bay, if you will, that area, sometimes the, with the zip codes and stuff, the state's picking up some of those that are, that are actually born cases. So we know and we, you know, we obviously forwarded to, to born and let them know, but their, their, their numbers as to how they're situating them.
It said O two five three two area there. That's part in Wareham and part in Buzzards Bay.
And there was one senior living facility that sort of picks up that a couple, which made a, made a big difference on there. So I think they, they have us around the two twenty number or something, so.
But in, is one of the facilities in Wareham on the list of having some severe issues with, with meeting the state requirements and...
Yeah, they received a notification. The state had not sent me, me personally, anything on it, but, you know.
That's serious stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, it is. They were one of three that was called out essentially.
The Commonwealth, right? Yeah, we saw that.
Correct.
So...
Our Board of Health does help and, and especially in the initial point was one of the contacts for the Commonwealth for a lot of these facilities going through and making sure they were doing things proper. People also need to understand, you can give our, our employees and your, your representatives, the town, town employees as hard a time as you want, but it's not going to stop them from doing their job and forwarding it to the Commonwealth as well because that's their job and they're doing the right thing.
Yep.
So I understand there's a lot of people frustrated. I, as I say, over the weekend, I took my two daughters out. It was the first time we had eaten outdoors. And there was a guy that went into a place right by us and put the shirt over his face as the mask and then came out screaming and yelling at everybody. It's just, it's unpleasant. There's no need for it.
Yep.
So we're all just trying to capture a little bit of, of normalcy, if you will, so.
Yep.
So we're on COVID-19, right?
Yep.
That's why I didn't jump in when you were talking. As you know, there's been an uptick, so as, I had read it on last Saturday and Selectman Slavin sent us some information from the governor's office. They'll be stiffening the regs and they're cutting back on the size of the crowds. Bars masquerading as restaurants are going to be smacked down. Restaurants cannot just serve liquor to someone sitting at the table. It has to be with a meal. So, and supposedly going to have a task force and assist the towns in enforcing these. So it's up to us too, to ensure that we, we're diligent about what we should be doing here in the town.
Wouldn't be surprised the A B C C doesn't get involved.
Well, they are.
They're involved.
They are. Maybe Mr. Slavin...
And they have inspectors.
Yep.
We have to reach out and ask the state for help, though.
Yeah.
They've put together this group of five or six different organizations, but they made it very clear today that we have to ask for the help.
Today?
Today.
Okay, so that's good to know. And, you know, I understand why they're doing that. As we were just talking about, the uptick and people are getting lax and we're getting very comfortable where we are with it. And as you were saying, you know, with the masks, the social distancing and that's all. Yeah, they...
That does bring something up, though. You know, with regard to the latest order that does require somebody to have, you know, when you first walk in, you can't just order a beer. You got to order a beer and a sandwich or something.
Have milk.
Initially, and then after that, you can have your beers, I guess. What about, you know, maybe we should take the initiative and get some correspondence out to our pouring license holders and just say, take heed.
Would be a smart idea.
And if you don't...
And then that way, you know, in case they have been paying attention.
We can email, we can email them all.
They should be, but in case they haven't been paying attention, you know...
And if you're not a restaurant, you shouldn't be open and serving liquor or alcohol of any sorts.
Alan?
What came down today, they made very clear that you have to have prepared food at the facility. You can't serve pre-prepared food and say that that's food as a restaurant. That's where they're really going after it. Because a lot of bars and stuff, they may have some hamburgers or hot dogs pre-done or snacks, you know, and there's issues like that. The other issue, I got a couple of calls on, was we have a, not in Wareham, but in Buzzards Bay next door to us, there's a brewery that's open, you know, but they have, I think, a farm license because they, they make their own beer, but they're out doing serving and everything. And the question is, where do they fall? We have potentially on Main Street in Wareham, there's a young couple. Hopefully, they'll be opening up the same type of business. I'm not sure where they stand. So I've actually reached out to A B C C or have to see what's where it is because the A B C C doesn't license these organizations. They're a different deal.
I'd, I'd be interested to hear that because they did not say about the hamburgers or hot dogs. They said, and the guidance they gave us was potato chips, pretzels and other similar prepackaged shelf-stable foods or other food prepared off-site.[1673.18] So if you were nuking up a hamburger or a hot, you know, I mean, but do not constitute food prepared on-site. But they allow food trucks in there such as, so if you have a hot dog wagon, you're actually good.
Well, as an example, I think we have at, uh, Stone Path, I think Minake provides, Minky Brothers.
Yeah, he's got Miggles.
That's pre-prepared. If he had a truck there doing it, then it'd be legal, just as an example.
Yeah. And, and they're, they're licensed as a restaurant. You know, they're carrying permits to, to act in that capacity.
Well, I don't know, but, but here's the thing. I don't know that, uh, I mean, there's nothing in the order that says that a restaurant has, or that, uh, of a, an establishment, we'll just call it an establishment because that's what the state perspective is. I don't know that there's anything in their order that says that the establishment has to have a common vic. What, all they're saying is that the establishment has to serve food, uh, prepared food at the premises. Now, under our licensing regime, we, we have these places get a common vic typ- typically.
Um, if you don't.
So I think there's a little bit of a gray area there between what the state is saying and what we would, we would tend to say ourselves.
Well, you might.
But, but nonetheless, uh, you know, the, 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 uh, the bowl of goldfish on the, on the bar isn't going to cut it anymore. So, I think most of our places know that and they don't do that anyway. We don't have bars here, so.
Right, we, we've never had bar licenses, so we really have been, we've kind of been save this. The only difference now is we have some of these specialty licenses like Stone Path and, uh, you know, some of these other things that are sneaking into the mix.
That's still a.
Forever, all we ever had was restaurant licenses. We never had a bar license.
But that, that's still, um, uh, a malt, a license to serve beer and wine. It's still a, a license issued under, from the town under the AB, you know, the Alcohol Beverage Commission.
Yeah, yeah, they all.
So falls, it falls within that realm.
Yeah, it falls within the alcohol realm, but.
That's correct.
There is a, there is such a thing as a bar license versus a restaurant license.
I know, but we don't, we, I think there's maybe one or two that we.
We don't give out bar licenses we never have.
Except for clubs and one place that, uh.
Club licenses.
Those are club licenses. That's a completely.
I understand that, I understand that.
Different license.
Let's just continue and we, we don't need to beat this to death.
No, no, it was a good idea though.
Well, it's, it's, it's a point that I'm making.
It's always good.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will ask the, uh, I will ask the office tomorrow to just get in, to, we'll, we'll come up with a link, uh, to the governor's order and just send it out to the places that have pouring licenses and just say, in case you haven't heard, you know, take heed, this is, this, you know, read it for the requirements. And then that way, you know, we're putting, we're putting anybody who somehow didn't get the word, you know, on notice what they're supposed to do. And that way we can go forward in good conscience and enforce and also, you know, bring in the state in good conscience and enforce if we need to. Uh, let's see, anything else on COVID?
I think if you want, Peter, what I sent everybody at the end of last week, which is from the governor's office that lays it all out.
Yep.
Where, reinvent the wheel. If you don't have it, let me know, but just take what everybody got and just forward that.
Okay, let me make, let me make a note here.
Give it to the office, let them forward that. Also just a note, either you go to the COVID-19 state website or the MMA COVID-19 website, it's, it's on both of those places.
Yep. Okay, uh, refuse update.
Alrighty then. Um, Derek and I met with Carver yesterday, uh, Selectman Belbin and, um, Town Administrator, Rick, um, what's his last name, Derek?
LaFond.
LaFond, right?
LaFond, yeah.
And, uh, we're, we're continuing on what we started a few months ago, um, about possible and, and hopeful, um, inter-town agreement, intermunicipal agreement or some sort of an agreement to continue the facility in Rochester, at least on a, um, t- a trial basis. And, uh, what we did was ensure, we, we set another date for meetings. We want to have three meetings within a timeframe so that we, we're moving forward, not just letting it sit in the back burner. So we started discussing that and, um, basically laying down the ground rules. We're going to meet again as I believe at next, probably next Wednesday, is it, or?
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, so, so that's moving forward. Also, um, they sent, the, the CMW sent a letter, um, saying we have to let them know if we have any interest in any of the equipment indoor, the property in Rochester. And, um, as they sent that, the, the, the actual motion was only to send a letter if you wanted, if you had any interest in the equipment. But somehow they put the property in there. So I think for our, in our best interest, we should send something to them that we are interested in, um, discussing and, and possibly negotiating for, uh, related to the Rochester Convenience Center, um, facility. And, um, leave it at that in a broad format, because I don't want them, I don't want to get into a, a situation where we get voted out of, uh, of an ability to negotiate because we did not send a letter that we have an interest, an interest in negotiating.
I got, so, and I'm sorry to interrupt, saying, basically we're saying, we have an interest, we're not saying, hey, here's a thousand dollar deposit or anything, but just saying.
Absolutely not, we can't do that.
Yep.
So I'd, I'd like to, um, get a motion from the board that we, we send a letter to that effect and, uh, tell them that we would be, I, I would assume the same two people, um, Town Administrator Sullivan, myself, will, of course, with, with discussion with you, um, enter into some discussion with them either solely or in unison with the town of Carver, um, depending how they move forward, but I don't want to get frozen out because of lack of action on our behalf. Even though I don't believe the motion that was, what they did was the motion that was made in the table and I, I don't want to deal with that.
I don't, I don't, and I don't have a problem with that. My, my issue would be is I'm not really interested in owning a piece of land in Rochester. Uh, I don't ha- I don't have a problem with the equipment.
It's okay.
And moving it somewhere else.
Yeah.
Or whatever, no, no issue at all. But I wouldn't want to own a piece of land in Rochester, but the equipment would obviously be a big integral, so if that's part of it, then we make a motion to show that we have some interest in something.
Well, in the equipment, they want to specifically know what they're interested in. Now, now in the land, um, it's, it's already there, it's already set up.
I know that.
And it's, it's, um, although it's not in our town, nor Carver's town, it's in between the two. So.
Yeah.
And, and, and actually to, to operate a facility, you, you have to, you know, we want it to be self-supporting. So, you hit a critical number. You have to eat a, hit a minimal critical number in order to support the operational cost. The refuse cost would be covered by a disposal fee if we do debt, bag disposal. So, in order to keep the cost within reason for a sticker, you have to have the critical number of users because an operation costs X amount of dollars, period. So, in order to build one in our town, you gotta put a lot of capital expense into it. This is really already going. And we didn't, we didn't, we're just saying, at, at first it would be on possible, possibly not purchasing it outright, but leasing it up to two years, say. And I don't want to get into too many details of, of what we've, I've been thinking, what we've been discussing. Um, and then with an option to purchase, or if you don't before a certain period of time, you can option out of it and, and revert it back to the district. Now, don't forget, we own, between us and Carver, we own two-thirds of everything. So we own two-thirds of the value of that property up top. We own, so.
Well, the Carver one is, the one that's in Rochester, isn't that set up and run by Covanta?
No, it's, it's owned by us, but Covanta runs it out of, under a contract for zero.
Yeah.
And, and that, that all ends, as you know, December 31st.
Right.
So we need to transition over as, um, the district had, had voted, did vote, to end operation, even though we'll remain as an administrative committee, just to oversee future liabilities that once or twice a year have a meeting, make sure this is paid, that's paid. So, there would be funds in the district coffers that should cover our associated costs with anything at this point in time. And it would, again, be self-sufficient as far as operation by the sale of the stickers. And if it works out that it cannot be operated as such, we would cease operation. We figured we needed at least a year, a year and a half. So we'd rather do a lease and not commit to an outside outright purchase at this point in time. This is what we've been discussing. And, um, because there's a number of people who want the transfer station option. Everybody does not want curbside pickup nor need a 65 gallon tote. And we don't know what the numbers are going to come in and we need to keep our options open.
Well, let me, let me just jump in for one second here. Isn't the, uh, sort of trash summit that we're going to be having on September 1st, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Is, that's going to go into a lot of this as well, isn't it? Isn't that, isn't that going to be designed to advise us, uh?
Well.
Of, of the, the various options, including maintaining a transfer station, what the costs are, so on and so forth?
Well, he, he only did a draft on that, so I haven't even seen as being part of that, a full, a full, uh, a, a full and complete, uh, proposal of, of what the operational cost would be. And included in it were a lot of things that would not be taking place at that facility. There would be no, there would be no second entrances, no additional roads, uh, minimal increase, uh, we would utilize what was there and ensure, and try to ensure to the best of our ability that the district ensures that the operational, uh, aspect of the equipment is in the best possible condition it could be, so that we're not dumping a ton of dough into it.
Yep.
Um, we're, we're not looking to, we're, we're looking to transition over to see if it's feasible and to offer the, the residents of town an option beyond forced curbside pickup, which from my understanding and Mr. Bowen's, um, information that, uh, town meeting would have to approve it. Um, we cannot just do it as a fee structure because then it's a choice. And you, you cannot force them to do it, a person to pay a fee for something.
Um, yeah, no, you can't force them to pay anything. You, if they want to use the service, then they've got to pay it.
We need to keep our options open and not pin ourselves into a corner on this. So, all I'm saying is, is to send a letter saying we, showing, saying that, um, interest in negotiations related to Roche, entering, you know, enter into negotiation related to the Rochester Convenience Center and not pigeonhole ourselves one way or another.
I'll make the motion that Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Muneys are authorized by this board to continue negotiations to, on, in the best interest of the town of Wareham, which may be, uh, concerning equipment and/or land.
And, and included in that would be, would be sending a letter of potential interest?
Yes, yeah, to respond, to respond to.
That's the specific request.
Yeah, to respond to that letter that was sent.
Yep.
Needs to be done by the 20th, that's why.
Yep.
Can I?
I'll second it.
I did?
Second.
Yep.
Seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Just before we do that, I just want you to know that I'm going to vote for this because I think you should continue working on something, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate that if it came down to us owning or leasing a piece of land in another town, I would not be in favor of it.
So that's, that's all right, that's, you're entitled to that.
I'm, I'm okay with this, okay? Just so you know. I'm just letting you know upfront, that's all.
Yep. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0, so you gentlemen can work together and get the letter out and we're good.
Thank you, and you'll take care of the letter, Mr. Sullivan or Chairman?
Say you voted tonight?
I think I've got my marching orders.
Yep, you do.
Say that we voted to do it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Anything else, uh, for refuse at this point? Other than, you know?
Know that, and like I said, we have the, um, hazardous waste day on the 22nd of August, and it might be the only one this year.
Yep.
Um, so.
Yeah, that'd be important if that could get out, that there's no guarantee of a, of another one, so.
Wareham Municipal Maintenance and, uh, Benson Brook Road and, um, Marion will be the two sites. That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is our two donations to the Wareham Free Library. The first one is in the amount of $100 from Carol Birch. The second is from the Wareham Library Foundation in the amount of $10,000, and that is specifically earmarked for the purchase of books and materials with the intention of maintaining the library certification with Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. I move that the Board of Selectmen accept those donations.
Okay, motion to accept the generous donations from Carol Birch and the Wareham Library Foundation by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0, and thank, uh.
This motion?
To him.
Thank you for your generosity, folks.
Can I make this one?
Uh, acceptance of bond for Patterson Brook Road extension.
Okay, um, I'm going to make this motion because, um, I move that we, uh, accept the insurance bond, $300 from the Patterson Brook Road Extension in the industrial park for the projected purpose by Coastal Cult- Cultivars?
Cultivars.
Cultivars?
Yeah.
The planning board accept the performance bond on July 27th. Uh, with the, with one caveat that I wanted added to it, and that this bond not be released until the selectmen vote on releasing it.
Second.
I want that on the record.
Second.
Alan?
A lot of times when someone puts a bond up, the company that puts the bond up, the company they use for the bond, a lot of times they'll sell their bond off very quickly just to, uh, get their interests in gone. I'd like to make sure that in the particular agreement, that we're notified of who the bond company is, if they're going to sell it, uh, this board can say, yes, you can or can't. But we want to make sure that we get notified because what happens is when this goes through a couple of hands and say the person's put the bond up, they, they don't renew it at the end of a year, it lapses and we never know about it and we have no bond.
That's Western Surety.
Would you like to amend your motion to include that?
That's Western Surety, right? Isn't that Western Surety?
Yeah, but do you want to amend your motion to?
So Western Surety, just so you know, I'll add, I'll add what Alan went to my motion.
Yeah.
But Western Surety doesn't sell any of their bonds. I have some bonds with them for road, road use and stuff. Western Surety doesn't sell anything, just so you know, Alan, they're pretty good.
Just want to make sure, it's been a problem.
That's part of the motion.
But I, I'll just make you at ease a little bit with that because I have some bonds with them and they don't sell anything.
Usually.
Okay, we have a motion by Patrick, seconded by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Taken care of. Uh, request to replace a memorial bench in Bessie Park. This was an interesting one. Uh, Derek didn't recall that there were any benches in Bessie Park until I Google Earthed it and sent him a screenshot. Lo and behold, there's a bench in Bessie Park.
There's two, all the way back against the road.
Yeah.
Cause I was trying to envision them right up against the sidewalks.
Right.
You'd think they'd be.
So then, then the question became, uh, he thought perhaps the policy only pertained to memorial benches and onset, so I went and I looked at our selectmen's policy on memorial benches, and it's not restricted to onset, so, uh, we can go ahead and authorize this, it's, it's all good, if we, if we want.
Yeah, we've got them down Swift Beach too.
Yeah, you've got, we just replaced one in Swift's, so.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure the pot place guys use it as a place to wait, so it's probably good seating for them.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the replacement of the park bench in Bessie's Park in loving memory of Janice Ellis.
Absolutely. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, accept the replacement of the bench by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And thank you to the person who's stepping up to, uh, replace the bench. Uh, next up, vote to release executive session minutes previously accepted but not released. And this was the last set of minutes that Attorney Bowen, uh, said we could release when he did his recent foray into the executive minutes.
Okay, second. She make the motion?
Yep. Okay, we have a motion by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Uh, let's see. Discussion and vote to execute a marijuana host community agreement with Yucan B Co. LLC at 3065 Cranberry Highway. This was the one that came before us a couple of weeks ago when we, we authorized, uh, the negotiation to take place as we usually do with the town administrator and, and town planner slash director of, uh, planning and community development. And this is what they've come back with.
These are similar to the ones we've negotiated in the past, I assume.
No, they're similar. They, um, they had asked for some different timeliness in the payments. We brought that back, um, to, to be, um, to be more in line with, with everybody else. It's a 3% impact fee because it's a production. You don't get the X size, you only get the impact fee.
Right.
Um, they're, they said they want to do some donations. We cannot tell them they have to.
Right.
That's.
Yeah, that's been.
Yeah, that, that was a lot of trouble over that one.
So there was some language in, there was some language in.
There was some guys that go to jail over that one.
There was some language in there stating that the town was directing them, so I had that removed.
Yeah. Yeah.
That they, they said that they've wanted to. If they want to, that is perfectly fine, but we are not telling them they have to.
Yep.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the execution of the marijuana host community agreement with Ucan B Co. LLC at 3065 Cranberry Highway to authorize Derek Sullivan, the town administrator, to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and execute by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Next up, vote to change precincts four and five from Deacon School to the Redmond Hall for the elections on September 1st, 2020, which is the state primary, and November 3rd, 2020, which is the state federal election.
It's a temporary move?
It's, uh, it's a move occasioned by the fact that the school couldn't promise us the use of the gymnasium that we've had in the school before because they may have to spread the students out. And so for now, we believe it's temporary. Of course, once the Deacon School gets torn down, it's.
Out of there anyway.
It's out of there. So, you know, I guess we might as well get used to going to a different place.
You know, interesting enough, he said torn down. I heard that.
That'd be a great senior center and stuff, too, multi-use building, so, you know, that's down the road.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have a lot of fun.
You're trying to reserve a spot, Jim? What are you doing?
I'm trying to help, help the residents of the town out, achieve some goals that we need to achieve.
There you go.
Thank you.
I recommend, um.
He's trying to reserve a room.
I make a motion that we authorize the change of precinct four and five from the Deacon School to the Redmond Hall for the elections on September 1st, 2020, and November 3rd, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion from Clerk Whiteside and a second from Selectman Troppiano. I'd like to thank both Steve Curry of the Redmond, who also happens to work in our assessing department, and Clerk Michelle Bissonette for working together. They went out there, they took a tape measure, they measured everything out, they made sure that, you know, in the age of voting with COVID, that there would be enough space in there for both precincts, that the entrances were sufficiently numerous and apart from each other, that people wouldn't be getting on top of each other when they went in to exercise their constitutional right to vote. So they vetted this very carefully, so I'd like to thank them for it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Next, we have the warrant for the state primary. I move that we authorize the signature of the state primary document presented to us by the town clerk.
Second.
Okay, motion to establish the warrant for the state primary by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Next up, discussion and vote to accept the U.S. Census Bureau's proposed map of the town for the 2020 federal census, just for the public's edification. This was forwarded to our chief perambulator, Mr. Howard Smith. He and Selectman Whiteside and Selectman Slavin had great fun out in the woods, avoiding poison ivy and God knows what else.
Actually, Mrs. Whiteside fell in the water.
Tripped me and pushed me into a ditch.
Okay, well, I think the statute of limitations on assault is passed, so I think you're stuck with that memory.
It's on the road.
But anyway, uh, we did, uh, did reach out to Mr. Smith because he knows the bounds of this town better than anyone, and he reviewed the map. He went out to municipal maintenance, and he took, I guess what you would call his compendium of the perambulation that the three people had done, and matched it up, and he's in agreement that the Census Bureau map matches what we think the town of Wareham really is.
So moved.
Mrs. Smith, actually, when we did this, went with a GPS, actually, set up, and so every location we found, we have a GPS number. Because some of the sites, such as where Maquis have the big electrical field, the solar field, when they were clearing the land, they cleared the marker completely. It was gone, we couldn't find it. Couple of residents over on the county road, one in particular took their particular marker and thought that was nice and picked it up and put it off to the side somewhere. And I think another marker was inside, inside a barn. We had one marker in the middle of a cranberry bog where.
That's out on Frogfoot Bog, I know that marker.
Right.
One of them was Mrs. Whiteside's.
Yeah, that's, that's my favorite one.
Yes.
Is that where you fell in the ditch?
Yes, dear.
Yes.
I will tell you that Howie and Claire were a little worried about me going out and perambulating, and I was pretty upset because I said, if Alan and Judy can do it, I can do it.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
We take offense at that.
No.
We can't?
No.
Oh, all right.
So if I'm correct, there's no datum on the map?
There is data on the map. She couldn't print the map, but there are.
I saw the ones that they sent us, but I mean, each point isn't like.
Every single point on the line.
On the one that they sent us? No.
The, no, the one that we saw earlier.
So basically, we're just saying it looks like it, and we agree that it looks like it, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It agrees with the previous records, yes.
Yeah. Because I, I mean, I looked at it, I said, there's no datum on this. So as best as we can tell, yes, it is, right?
Yep.
That's correct.
Correct. The best of our abilities without doing a full survey, you know?
Yeah.
It was using GPS the entire time.
And Point Zero is the congregation of church. It's where Point Zero for the town is. Everything works off that site.
Interesting.
I move to authorize the signature of the 2020 final boundary validation program by the chairman of this board for the 2020 federal census.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the Census Bureau's proposed map of the town for the census by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Is there a copy of that in here?
He just needs to sign the front.
Yeah, but there's no copy of the map in there.
No, she couldn't print the map.
Okay, next up is the vote to establish dates for fall 2020 town meeting and the notice of intent. Uh, let me dig this up on my phone here. I'll, I'll take this one. I worked on this. I ran it past town council. I ran it past Clerk Whiteside. I ran it past the moderator. There were a few questions, there were a few changes in the process. But this matches the language that was approved in the charter roughly a year or two ago regarding how the warrant is, is created, how the warrant is posted, and so on and so forth. So I'll read it, and if somebody could make that their motion. Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Process for calling a town meeting, October 26, 2020, general business. Tuesday, August 11, 2020, that's today. Board of Selectmen establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the fall town meeting. Friday, September 11, 2020, last date to post upon town's principal bulletin board and the town website. Notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the fall town meeting for October 26, 2020. This is pursuant to the Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 24C, which is 10 days' notice before the warrant closes. Tuesday, September 22, 2020, last day for articles and/or petitions to be inserted in the warrant. This is pursuant to the Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4C again, which is 10 days or more after the warrant opens. Tuesday, September 22, 2020, Board of Selectmen officially close the warrant. Monday, September 28, 2020, last day to post upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website, and deliver a copy of warrant to the town moderator and to the chairman of the finance committee, who's sitting in the back tonight. Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4D, which requires the warrant to be delivered no later than the last Monday in September. Monday, October 26, 2020, commencement of fall town meeting. This is pursuant to the town bylaws, Division 1, Article 1, Section 1. Fall town meeting shall be held on the 4th Monday of October.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions about the timeline? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is done. Next up is the notice of intent. This is our actual posting. Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Notice of 2020 fall town meeting, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth Shire Town, to either of the constables of the town of Wareham. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the bylaws of the town of Wareham amended. You are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town of Wareham that the fall town meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 26, 2020, at which time business of the town shall be transacted. The last day for submission of articles to be inserted in the warrant is Tuesday, September 22, 2020. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, September 22, 2020, and you are hereby directed to post this notice upon the town's principal bulletin board on or before Monday, September 28, 2020. Hereof fail not and make due return of this posting with your doings thereon to the town clerk, given under our hands at Wareham this 11th day of August in the year 2020. A true copy attests. Peter Titlebaum, Chairman, Judith Whiteside, Clerk, Alan Slavin, Patrick Troppiano, James Munees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions about the, the notice? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
The next item on the agenda is to ratify the hiring of Diana Patton as the Council on Aging Outreach Worker. I move that we ratify that appointment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to ratify the appointment, seconded by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. Any discussion or questions?
I would just like to thank town administrator and assistant town administrator, Director of Human Resources, Doreen Allen England, for putting together packets of, of the individuals. And if you wanted to review them, you could review them. I took and looked at them, and I, I think they're very qualified individuals, and I'm confident now that I know what I'm voting on. And I think it would be remiss of me to do otherwise without having looked at them myself. So I want to thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it.
And we might be doing that moving forward in order to accomplish, at least have them available to accomplish what is the charter states. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I guess, I mean, I have all the faith in the world in Derek, in hiring and creating a team that he needs around him. He's been around here for a while, and I've worked with him for long enough to have total faith in, in his decisions. And, you know, at one point, all we did was look at department heads, which I think is legitimate. But, you know, to bring up some of these little assistants and some bookkeeping and, you know, outreach workers and stuff seems silly to me. But Derek, you have my permission to, to appoint any of them anytime you want, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. We have another appointment here? Two more?
Yep, there's two more.
But where are they on the agenda?
Want to make the motion?
I do, but where are they on the agenda?
No, they're not.
Uh, we're on number N.
The Amber White.
Is it there?
Yeah.
I, I'm looking, oh, you know what? I'm looking at the old agenda. Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's an update.
Yep, there's an update. I move to ratify the hiring of Tracy Pina as bookkeeper at the Municipal Maintenance Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Slavin. Once again.
Yeah.
This is another ratification of appointment.
And again, I, I looked at all three and everybody, and again, I appreciated it and thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Move to ratify the hiring of Amber White as assistant to the Municipal Maintenance Department.
Second.
Okay, motion to hire, to ratify the hiring by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Okay. Continued discussion regarding towing from town property in public ways. Alan, Alan wanted to revisit this, uh, so I'll, you know, let Alan have a say on this.
I know there's feelings in both directions, whether it's too draconian to tow as well as fine people, but I think in certain areas where we have the residents, you know, screaming all the time about people parking in front of their homes, you know, with no stickers or anything else, we owe them at least the respect of giving them some kind of a tool to make it more difficult for people to do this and where they, you know, because when you tow somebody, it's usually over a hundred dollars as well. Plus the fact when you get there and your car's not there anymore, it's a little difficult. I know people are not going to be happy because there always is a possibility a resident could get towed, but hopefully that won't happen. But I'm not asking for it to be in all areas, but I think around Onset Village and around the beaches in particular, that's where the real problem is. It's up to the board how you want to handle it, but I know that just giving someone a ticket doesn't always fix the problem.
Yeah, I did, you know, one, one of the things I did before we had it on the agenda a couple of weeks ago is I went around to the four town beach lots and checked, you know, the signage to see what was there, you know, did it say stickers? Okay, yep. Two out of the four did say tow zone.
Correct.
And Little Harbor was one, and it was either Swift Beach or Swift Snack. But one of the Swiss didn't have one, and Shell Point didn't have one. And so I think for consistency's sake, at the minimum, those two should have them. And those are under our control, so we can, we can vote and go ahead to, to make it so. Regarding the other areas, of course, that would involve, you know, modifying our recommendation to the road commission, which we can do, you know, if the board so chooses. You know, you bring up a good point that, you know, maybe it's not so much just the beach, but it's the attraction of the beach and what it creates in the surrounding neighborhoods. So what's the, what's the feeling of the board about that?
Well, I, I don't see how you can have enforcement in those places without having towing. I mean, you got to tow them. I mean, it's as simple as that. At some point, you let them, you put the ticket on, you wait a certain amount of time, and if they don't move, then you got to take them out because otherwise, what's the sense? Otherwise, what happens is, let's say somebody comes and we're charging $50 now to, for whatever, and the guy says, well, I'll pay the 50 bucks, and I'll spend the day here and do whatever I want to do, and 50 bucks sounds cheap enough for me. You know, but if he's under the threat, you know, you tow a couple of cars, I'll tell you what, he ain't going to do it anymore. It gets around real fast.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
I think in a couple of areas that are really, we'll call it high incidence of not using common sense, that it might make sense to put those towing signs up. And I would suggest that we leave it to the municipal maintenance and the police department to figure out where.
Well, they would work with the, they both are represented on the road commission, so that's a logical place. But the, I think the point of what Alan wanted was to sort of readdress our recommendation and possibly add to it, so if that's.
That's, I would, I would add that recommendation to add the towing signs where that board feels that it would be most appropriate.
And you also agree that the two other beach lots should have them?
Yes. But it would also be wherever else they might feel it is appropriate.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we're going to have discussion for, for whatever's under the authority of the road commissioners, they have the authority to impose and to make regulation.
Yes, they do.
And anything that's under us, we, we have that authority. And anything that's under us, we, we have that authority.
Right.
I, I didn't know if Mrs. Whiteside was going to the point where she was saying that, you know, not, not every infraction would necessarily need to be towed, but I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Some, some things are severe and you say, you know, it's a fifty or a hundred dollar fine and they should absolutely not be there, they're gone. And other thing, you know, you get a fifty dollar ticket for parking in, in the residence beach. I think that's a pretty good penalty. I, for sure, if you get a hundred dollar tow on top of that, you're gonna, you're gonna take notice. I, I know I would be pretty upset and I know there's probably a number of people would be doing that and probably would be hard pressed to pay the fifty dollar fine, never mind a hundred dollar tow. So I just have mixed feelings about that additional cost. Not that I'm against it and, you know, if you're in an area that says no parking and there's diagonal lines on it, boom, or in a handicap spot, boom. But, you know, I, I just have mixed feelings on that.
I believe I said at the, I believe I said at the discretion of the, the, the people who would be issuing the towing order.
Yeah, and you know, there's, there's different levels of violations, you know, on the public ways. For example, you know, you can park, you know, without a sticker in onset and earn yourself a ticket. And okay, you know, you, you get your ticket for doing it. If you park in onset where you're not supposed to park without a sticker and you're blocking somebody's driveway, I don't feel so badly if they put the hook on your car and yank it out of the way. And I think to some extent, you know, even though this isn't under our control, I, I think that we still, we still can, you know, trust in the road commission and trust in the, the police officers and.
Yeah, and I'm specifically talking to only the places that were under our control, which would be the beach parking lots or parking lots. Not, nothing to do with the roads or anything else. That's, that's under the road commissioners and it's their decision.
Well, I guess the question then becomes, we've got two out of four, which way do you want to go? That's, so whoever makes the motion, you know, make it, make it the direction you want to go and we'll vote on it.
She just made the motion.
And he seconded it.
And I seconded it.
Okay, so what was?
It was to.
Allow towing.
To allow, to authorize the placement of signs that say tow zones in places that appear to be the ones that are the most abused, if you will. And that the discretion of the public safety officers will be used when they authorize the towing of vehicles.
Okay.
And the beaches specifically were mentioned in my.
Right, now in terms of public ways, all that can be is a recommendation to the, to the road.
That's correct.
So I'll have to send out another letter if this is, if you guys voted.
It's just a recommendation.
And Patrick seconded it.
Yep, okay, so we have a motion from Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. I'll get the letter out tomorrow. Okay, any town business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the meeting? Alan?
No.
Patrick?
Nope.
Judy?
No.
Jim?
Nope.
Me, nope. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've obviously gone over a lot of things tonight, but there's an important update. I'd like, I'd like the residents to, to know. If you've not paid your fiscal year 2020 real estate, personal property, or motor vehicle excise tax, you should pay it, pay it or them by Monday to avoid the fifteen dollar demand fees. Demands will be in the mail soon. They, they should have been issued in the spring. We held off on doing that as, you know, trying to work through, through things, understanding. But the FY 2020 first quarter real estate and personal property bills were due August 3rd and FY 2021 sewer usage bills will be mailed by the end of August. Sewer usage demands were issued a few weeks ago and they were due yesterday. If you need to pay your real estate and personal property bills online, you can again, go to our website, I'll see if we can put another update, just bring that back to Ford because we've had long lines of people when, when the bills were due. And there's nothing, I'm not saying anything against it, certainly they're right. But they waited in line, some of them, to just hand the envelope and walk away. And we have the drop box outside if you need it. I understand feeling the security, making sure that it, that it got there, but you know, we're, the easiest thing you can do for yourself is make your own life easier at this time, stay away from crowds. And without sounding crude, a lot of the persons that are, were doing that were, were a little bit older and in the, the age bracket that would be susceptible. So I know you may not want to try and pay it online. We do have the lockbox out there. It's been secure. We've never had any issues except for a local real estate property owner and attorney shoving their, their MLC requests in there, which blocked the whole darn thing, but, which then they were informed that they will not be getting any requests done if they ever do that again. So you'll need your motor vehicle excise tax bill in hand to, to research those or you can call the office as well. So, you know, trying, those demands, obviously you can have a few cents in interest or, or something or, you know, over five dollars and it starts with the demand. So if at all possible, please try and pay that. Save yourself some headaches and some costs. And it is not the, the collector's office staff doing this to you.
State law.
It's, yeah, correct.
And, and, and you know, there was, I'm not gonna, you know, get too, too much into details, but somebody went on to Facebook to complain about a demand they received. And some of the advice was to not pay it and call the Attorney General. That is about the worst possible advice that could have been given to this person because the Attorney General's gonna, first, they're gonna yell at you and then they're gonna tell you you have to pay it and then they're gonna hang up. So you're not gonna get anywhere and you're gonna wait 20 minutes on hold before you speak to anybody there, so just, just, just pay it. Save yourself the aggravation, you know. You pay something a day late and you get charged 32 cents interest. You sit there and you say, well, 32 cents, these jerks are charging me that. This is all done under state law. We don't set these regulations ourselves. The, the state legislature does. So we're the subordinate political unit. We have to follow orders that come from the state when it comes to collecting these things. Our department people don't have the legal authority to waive these things if they're established in state law. So don't go in and yell at them if they tell you they can't waive them. You know, go yell at Beacon Hill, go yell at the governor, go yell at somebody up in Boston, but don't yell at our people, please.
You know, when, if I can just quickly piggyback on that. I paid mine the day it was due, like at 6:30 or something, you know, getting, and it's, oh shit, I gotta pay them. I mean, darn, I gotta pay them. So paid them, blah, blah, blah. The efficiency of the electronic online stuff, it already picked it up, because it wasn't done at 5:00, and sent me a, a notice saying, demand. If you have not paid by, what'd you say, the 20th, is it? Whatever the date is, you will be fined. So, and I do, I do a lot of it online now, most of it, but, and they don't charge anything extra. And it was just the efficiency of it, right there, saying, hey, you didn't pay. If you don't pay, you're gonna pay.
Like, as Selectman Manise said, if you're paying with checking or savings, there's no additional cost to you. Debit or credit, there's the convenience fee. That's not our fee. That's charged by the, the company for the transaction, but.
3%, 2.9.
Yeah, 2.95, I think it is. But checking or savings is, is free. And if you've got a debit or credit, you most likely have a checking or savings to pay that debit or credit, so.
Very good, thank you.
Yep, and the other thing too is, you know, I've, I've seen people say, well, you know, the town should make it easier. You should, you should waive the, the credit card fee, but that doesn't go to us. That goes to the vendor. So in other words, waiving that would require us to unilaterally cut the tax that you paid, which is also illegal, so we can't do that. So our hands are tied when it comes to this stuff, but, you know.
Derek won't let us do it.
Yeah, the state and Derek won't let us do it. Okay, you got something else? What about the dam?
The update on the RFP?
Yeah.
Bob's piling on.
Yep. You're, you're an easy target tonight.
Hear that voice from the heavens?
Yep, exactly.
So there's, if you saw, and there was, I didn't know if the, I was trying to remember the RFP, so I, I printed out just some of the field, field, Sessors Field card. That's for Zero Tremont Mill Pond. The picture is of the property in the middle. That used to be, at one point, it was a recreation center underneath there. I believe Mr. Buckland had sent out the information. This is, you know, give, talk about facility, not facility back and forth. Part of this is because there's an actual energy generation facility on that. The dam has a, I think, 0.9 megawatt turbine in there. The turbines aren't necessarily any good.
Not working anymore though.
Right, correct. So hasn't for, you know, the 20 some odd years. But there's interest and there's.
Did work.
In doing evaluation of these and doing a proper. We had somebody in here beforehand, really looking at it and stuff like that. There's also, if you look, the property below, there's the potential where you could maybe put solar on there because you cannot do anything else right now.
Was that bought with community preservation funds as open space? If so, you can't do that.
Right.
That's why I was questioning that in the.
I think the town has owned that property since before community preservation was adopted.
The land, the land, no, the land trust was offered that property and we looked at it and did not take action on it. If it's where the old mill was, below the dam, correct?
The town, the town got that in 1961. Town received it in 1960.
If you look on the document here, it says sale date, 12/29/61, so that's certainly predate.
Okay, yeah.
So we're good there.
So it's the stuff south of it.
I remember when it used to work.
When the turbine did?
Yeah, we, we actually.
Which, which part?
Yeah, I'm looking at this here.
We actually used to make a few bucks on it. Once upon a time.
All right, just, I just, if, if so.
Good point, make sure, you know, something can happen there.
The butters would like that.
Then we needed a bunch of money to fix it and we decided not to go forward.
I'm just trying to pull up the book real quick, Jim. Should be 2907.
We had the camp there for a couple of years.
Correct. There's still a building on there from the, from the camp, a couple different things.
It's lot 1,000, right?
Uh, size and acres, 22.3.
Yep, so that's this, that's this property right here that includes the dam.
Okay. And if that's the case, then I guess they can, you know.
I know.
This, this bid already went out, right?
I know.
No, we have not put it out.
Because it says it had to be returned by August 3rd in the documentation that I read.
That was the original. We're just, that would be updated for when it goes out. I asked, originally it was going to go out, I asked Mr. Buckland to send it to the board and just update everyone so that there's not a big surprise when it pulls. So.
You know.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the RFP for release?
No, it's town property under his control. This is more by way of information in case people look over and, you know, something eventually does happen, they're not.
That was originally Ken's. I told Ken that I'd need, I would want the selectmen to go over it. He said for a selectman vote. I have not requested a vote, which is why it's under the TA report and not a.
I, I personally, I don't believe I would be in favor of a solar field on the 16 acres there.
Correct.
Its location. So I don't mind, you know, someone wants to use the generator and stuff, but, you know, it's along the river and.
Well, I would have to go to town meeting anyway because nobody's gonna put one of those up with anything less than a five, it would be a 20-year lease.
Yeah, you'd need a.
I would have to go to town meeting.
So this is the, I understand what you're saying. This is for the initial feasibility of something to go out there.
Letting you know my feelings as far as the solar part, the rest of it.
Yeah, part of it could even be the battery storage, believe it or not. That's, that's a big one too.
That's, that's a good thing.
Okay, anything else under your report?
FERC is ready to remove the license that we have on there for energy generation just because it's been, been stagnant and they've been going through some of the reports. So I'll be, it would be interesting to see what, what we get back on this. And, you know, it's potentially, if we have any projects coming into town or any, any new buildings, you can link that to it, to, for some of the generation.
You're gonna notify FERC when you send out an RFP?
Yep.
Okay, just let them know that, you know, we're not just turning our back on it entirely. Good, thank you. Anything else under your report?
No, now there's nothing.
Now there's nothing, okay.
Just a comment on that. This will be probably the fourth personal group to have interest in, you know, using the new style generators. Everyone has failed so far to be able to go forward due to costs, et cetera. When Ken sent this over, I did contact Beth Lambert at the state level because we did have them come in and look at both dams about removals. I want to make sure she understood that there was a possibility of that dam now being used. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, liaison initiative reports. Start with Alan.
Community Events Committee is gonna be meeting on Monday. We have, okay. The possibility, we've talked to this, I've actually talked to Derek about using community events money, which is allowed to be used for basically tourism, for residents coming in for improving facilities, et cetera. The possibility of having a couple dumpsters for trash over at the Onset Pier, basically on the entrance way into the beach, where the CEC money would be used for the dumpster and the cost of emptying the dumpster. We'll have some discussion on Monday. It's up to Mr. Sullivan whether he wants to okay it or not. That's one piece there. As far as the stuff I sent off today, there's no question that the governor is cranky about what's happening. Testy is another good word. We're at a point where he's really close to really pulling the strings in tight if this thing doesn't turn around a little bit. He's very upset about, you know, obviously the public beaches, public gatherings, et cetera. We'll see what happens. Again, I recommend that anyone who is an individual, anyone who has a business is not sure what they're supposed to do or not, go up to the state COVID-19 website or the Mass Municipal Association, which is MMA website. All the information's there and it's current. The problem we have is what's current today is not gonna be current tomorrow. Things keep moving. Derek mentioned the listing of the three different types of colored dot areas as to whether for the schools. Most of today's discussion with Lieutenant Governor was on the schools. And they basically have, you know, a certain number of cases per 100,000. And it says remote only, then it says, you know, hybrid and remote, then it says in-person or, or basically hybrid. And this will be something that goes on constantly because you could be in a town where you're okay today and the numbers turn and you have to change your program right as you're going along. So again, you know, whatever Wareham today says they're gonna do, there's no guarantee that's gonna continue that way. It's a hell of a way to run a program, but that's the way it's gonna be, just so everybody understands that. Just see, one of the big things for a lot of people, for kids, fall sports program is still not available yet. They haven't made a final decision, but it's not looking good at all, which is kind of a tough thing overall. School buses, there was no question about social distancing being required. And they're also requiring what they call a staggered type of seating. You'd have a seat here and you would have a seat over there in different rows. So if you have a 77-passenger bus, you might get 25 to 28 kids in a bus. Which people have to realize that means we'll have three to four times the number of bus trips that we normally have, which means more drivers. I don't know how we're gonna buy more buses. So definitely gonna have to have some staggered times to make that work and that's not gonna change. Everybody understands that the gathering outdoors has gone from 100 to 50. Indoors is 25, but there are some exceptions for 10 only. And of course, phase three, step two, it's been very clear, it's indefinitely postponed. And I love the word indefinitely. And as far as, you know, the enforcement of violations of restaurants, bars, violating state guidelines, they're using multiple agencies now. Obviously, the governor has two or three of his own agencies. They have, you know, the ABCC. The Board of Health has been able to step back a little bit because most Board of Health and most municipalities don't have the staff to do anything except do their regular job as it is. And basically what's gonna happen there, there'll be fines, closings or suspension of licenses. He made it very clear today, they're not gonna play games anymore. So unfortunately, what happens a lot of times is someone will call in a complaint. And unfortunately, if they go and check you and that complaint's good, it's not gonna be just, hey, don't do it again. There's gonna be consequences, so I'd ask our businesses, which are under extreme duress as it is, if they're not sure, call us if they want information, check the website, do something, don't get involved with us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
I'm all set tonight.
Judy? Jim?
Planning board meeting last night, attended remotely. I usually do. That's one of the conveniences, that's one of the conveniences of the Zoom. Can do it from the comfort of your own home and I'm, I'm not a participant unless, you know, of course, I speak as a citizen. And so you can listen to it, catch what's going on. So, so there are some benefits to the Zoom-style meeting. You don't, you don't get the direct, you know, interaction and, you know, the feeling of working with people, you know, talking with people, but there's some benefits. So interestingly, I, I saw a, a plan for the millwork on Charlotte Furnace Road. I noticed there were some number of contours. So I did speak as a citizen and I, I asked if they'd be filing. So, I, I did speak as a citizen and I, I asked if, um, they'd be filing an earth removal permit for that? Because in order to, um, you know, facilitate putting a foundation in there, you gotta pull down X amount of elevated earth. So, um, somehow we need to incorporate that into the process of permitting, um, and, and I also had some, an opportunity to address that, um, too, on the solar fields. Um, we, we need to move on that in some fashion, um, either just send the earth removal permit to them with a very basic, generic cover letter. Um, so, you know, the opportunity presented itself and...
Put it in with every application.
Too many years and too often it just gets, no, nobody ensures that it's getting, um, implemented. And that's, that's dollars. That comes down to dollars. And, uh, you know, we're just talking about taking into taxes and stuff, we all do it and it's, you know, if you wanna, you wanna remove earth in association with, uh, developments or, um, expansions and stuff, um, there's a cost associated with it. So that was, it kinda worked nice. I had the Affordable Housing Trust meeting this morning and, uh, that's, that's coming along nice, we're just really getting to going. Ken Buckland was there, um, we're looking, we wanted to know what he needed from us related to the, um, the plan, the housing plan, and, uh, he gave us a lot. So we'll be working on that with him and, uh, he's basically the support that we have for that committee. As we were talking, he's pretty stretched out as it is and sometimes he can come and help us and other times he can't. And we're talking about funding sources and possibly helping him at the same time helping us with, with, with a body, a part-time body or something. I mean, you can't expect volunteer committees to operate and have an effective, um, outcome from their charge as related to affordable housing and do it as just all volunteers. Someone has to in some way process paperwork towards, say if you have, um, uh, an apartment housing, you know, apartment, um, assistance program or, or something. There has to be a way to, for someone to filter all that and volunteers can't do that. You need someone in a position to do it. Either part-time with the town or you, you, you go out through a, um, a nonprofit or, or an agency within the area to do that because they do that. Maybe even the Wareham Housing Authority could, could do some of that. So, you know, we were talking on that. And again, I, we already went over that we met with Carver, so that, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, just, uh, with regard to the redevelopment authority, uh, the, uh, Richard Swenson, member of the authority, has put on, I believe now, uh, four different presentations for the proposed Wareham Village One rezoning, uh, and he's done a great job with that. As we know, Richard really enjoys putting together the PowerPoint presentations and going over it, he's, he's a whiz at it.
Very good.
There is going to be on the 17th, I believe, a planning board hearing, uh, in which this proposal, uh, will be brought before the public for comment and review and, uh, you know, subsequent to that, uh, it's possible that there, there may be some changes to it as it's been proposed. Uh, it's the whole purpose of the public input is if somebody comes up with a great idea or points out a flaw, it gives you the opportunity to fix it before it's final to go on the warrant. And I'd like to thank, uh, the planning board for getting out ahead of town meeting, uh, with their public hearings on this well in advance so that if there are changes to be made as a consequence of the public input, that will be reflected in the actual warrant article, uh, unless it's one of these, you know, 10-page things that you're gonna go to the town clerk's office, but even so, it will be available in, in, in presumptively its final form, uh, in the clerk's office for you to go review so you don't have to, you know, chase the thing down three days before town meeting and figure out what the heck it's all about.
What about online?
Yeah, I mean, it could be put online.
I mean...
Well, the whole warrants...
I have it at the clerk's office in a hard copy, but online for, you know, so if I wanna look at it, I just pull it up and I can, I can, I have to come to the town hall and stand there and...
Yeah, and that's something we can recommend to the planning board. I mean, that would be up to them, is they're the ones holding the public hearing.
As long as it has a clerk's stamp on it, so...
Right, right, yeah. So it would be the one that was filed, so we made sure we had the official one. Uh, I mean, you know, I suppose you could put one up and put a draft watermark on it if, if it was the one you were putting out there in advance of the public hearing, for example, if you wanted people to take a look at it, you could do that as well. But you'd wanna make sure that it was either the official copy or something that had a draft watermark on it so nobody got confused. Now, that's, that's something we lawyers do and we throw documents back and forth because it's very easy to, to miss something and screw it up and you get the wrong version and all of a sudden you handed it to the judge and the judge is going, this is not what you told me it was gonna be. And everybody gets yelled at, so...
Right, but be the same one that they published in the paper.
Yeah.
Does it get, does it, does it get published before they have the hearing on it? Or it says you can get the version at the, um...
Well, the hearing itself is noticed. I don't believe that in the case of a lengthy bylaw, that the entire proposed lengthy bylaw gets published in the paper. Uh, now, depending on what goes on the town meeting warrant, uh, it may or may not get published in the paper. For example, if you, if you publish, you know, a three-page thing in the warrant and when we were doing the warrant publication, then it would go in the paper. But of course, we're not doing the publication in the paper, the warrant anymore, that's just being posted.
Right.
So...
Damn.
But, you know, your point about trying to get it online makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's electronic age, we should, as long as it's legal, we should make it as convenient as we can for the majority of the population.
Just have to make sure we get the right ones up.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's all I have for liaison report, consent agenda.
Move that...
Do we wanna pay the lawyer?
Move to authorize the payment of the law office of Richard Bowen.
Second.
Okay, motion to pay Attorney Bowen by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Sleckman-Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I move the approval of the minutes of the meetings of July 14th, 2020, and July 28th, 2020.
Is everybody here?
No.
No.
No, uh...
You were not.
You missed one. Was, was that the birthday?
I think you missed the 14th and I think you had partial attendance on the 28th because you were having a problem with FaceTiming Ed.
Yeah, I tried to FaceTime Ed.
Present remotely, Patrick. That was on the 28th.
Yeah, I, I...
Yeah, you probably just abstained for both because you weren't here for the full meeting.
I'll just abstain from them both.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Patrick, 401 with Patrick abstaining. Uh, well...
Actually, before I do that, uh, I got an email from, uh, Mike from Mass DOT, from my little note. As soon as the meeting is over, he and I will be talking.
Nice.
Excellent.
Fast action, I like it.
Motion to adjourn.